You'd need to turn on your microphone over there if we're going to start. Yay, one, two, three.
I wasn't able to attend the last work session. However, I did observe it on screen. I thought it was very productive. There is, I think that you concluded the discussion of basic work, but there are two basic work issues that I would like to re-raise. And those have to do with the, let's see what number we got here.
I think it's already included in that list.
Yeah, I think so.
They are?
Yeah. The, yeah. Got it over here. On the proposed basic work section, the item, items three and four, COA changes and COA extension, both of those items, as I understand it, require staff approval. And the definition of basic work is that stuff can be done without anybody's approval. So that's a cause of confusion. And I wouldn't want any of our clientele to think that this, these are things that they can do without getting anybody's approval. And putting it in basic work gives that impression. So I would.
Can we go to the section of the standards that talk about basic work? Can we put those up? Define it?
Yeah. You're going to need to use your mic.
Sitting back there. How's that better? All right. Thank you.
A little better. You might need a little bit more.
Get much more, unless you want me to swallow it.
Or just sit forward.
I got it right about as close as I get it. There.
So on the screen right now, we have the existing basic work section on our left. And then the introduction and the information at the top of that's not what would be changing, but the proposed basic work section would then look a little more like what's on the right.
Because I got old eyeballs. Can you zoom that up a little bit?
Zoom it out?
Zoom it up.
Oh, zoom it in.
It's bigger.
And then just start from the top. There we go. Even bolded, basic work and routine maintenance require no approval from the village planner or historic preservation commission. And if you look over at COA changes and COA extensions, obviously, we know that those cannot be done unilaterally by the property owner. They have to get staff approval. I don't think we're proposing to change that. And therefore, that means that these items fit better into the minor work category.
I can, I can propose an idea here. If we could embold there under the existing language, requires no approval, maybe, say, basic work and routine maintenance require no approval from the village planner or historic preservation commission unless specified, where approval may need to be given in writing. And then we can expand on those items, three and four, that, you know, you know, that to something to the extent that the village planner, that we notified and village planner provide authorization in writing.
Well, didn't we talk about maybe there being some kind of notice or notification sent or just an informing?
My understanding, basic work could be done without any, in general, is done.
Unless, unless it's specified that you need something. What we don't want to do is require, what we're going to end up doing, if we require items like that to be minor work, what we're going to end up having to do, there's going to be another application and yet another COA that's going to have to fall with that property and with that project. So it, you can pull up, there'd be like one project and you could consider nothing could change, just an extension for three months or six months, and then you're.
Can there be a separate category that is something that requires notification or consultation? That's fee-free?
Most of those, most of those, I mean, look what they are, you know, installation of address numbers and mailboxes. Come on. I don't think that's too terrible. If you, if you replace, you got to have them.
No, what I'm saying is the COA, the two COA categories are what are giving us angst, right? So.
I think we're talking about basic work and routine maintenance, aren't we?
Well, but the two that are giving us angst are the COA-related ones, right?
So, just to kind of elaborate, because I'm just going to walk you through a scenario here. Let's talk about a COA extension, a six-month extension. That's a current thing that happens right now. So let's say.
Automatically?
No, let me explain it. So let's say, we'll say Joe comes in and pulls a permit. He's got his COA approval where he came to the board in his meeting. COVID hits and he has a lumber shortage. He can no longer get the lumber he needs.
It's delayed.
So he's, his entire project is delayed. Well, unfortunately, that has an expiration date originally set to it from when you all approved it, as to when the work should be done after he pulled his permit.
And what is that?
So it's typically one year.
Right. That's what I thought. Okay.
For active development. And he comes in, he's got two weeks left, and the lumber just came in, and we're expecting a hurricane. All right. So now we're, right now, the way it stands, I say, too bad, you have to pay me $100 on top of everything else you've probably been through. And then I can just go ahead and go, date's changed.
It, it's an application that's going to really have nothing for anybody to really review, other than, yeah, well, you realize that your, your timing's running out.
My point with that is, he has to come, and regardless, he has to pay, whether it's a minor, a major, a basic, it doesn't matter, because he has current permits on file with us, that he has to let us know, hey, I have a two-week deadline, I'm not going to be done, can I please have an extension? Otherwise, his entire permit goes expired, and he has to start the process over again. So as a contractor with a contract of the property owner or the property owner themselves, they're going to come in and say, hey, I need just a little bit more time, please, to finish this project.
So what you're saying, though, is it's, you have some discretion as staff, whether you will grant it or not? Or are they automatic?
Typically, and I'll give an explanation, because most of, in most of these cases, there's going to be an associated building permit or another development permit with it as well. So.
Has to be a building permit, more than likely.
Most likely. But, you know, typically, those permits are good for six months if the work has not started. If it has started and you've had an inspection, then you have the same 365-day window. So outside of historic district, we've got a permit on file. Same situation that Alexandria mentioned. What they have to do per the development ordinance is they have to get permit extension approval from the village planner in writing. So that would be consistent with that. But, two, you got to consider, you know, if, what changes? Have there been any changes? And that's sort of, that's statutory as well, you know, what's changed? So we have the discretion, if we revise these guidelines since you had your COA approved, or if the development ordinance has changed relative to that, then we most likely would not grant that extension, because now the rules have changed. You should have kind of already gone forward, unless there are emergency circumstances. So there, there's some discretion, but not much, but it really relates to have the requirements changed in the meantime.
Can't we just move those two to an asterisk or?
Yeah, that's why I said unless authorized.
Under the seat, the whole COA approval and just explain.
I'm totally confused now. Absolutely.
The two topics we're talking about are COA changes and COA extensions, which is number three and number four.
But I keep hearing the words "basic work and routine maintenance" put into the discussion as well.
That's the category that they put in.
Correct. Because it's, it is basic work and routine maintenance for them to make sure that their permit is valid and active.
Why don't we just move it out into?
We could take it out completely, where it's not addressing, it's just logic.
It just have its own, hang it out somewhere else. And, and we can define that. You, you can get an extension, but you must get authorization from the village planner.
Doesn't make any sense to me to be even talking about COAs when you're talking about basic work and routine maintenance that doesn't require one. I, I mean, I don't understand the nexus to the two, the two of them being even connected to each other. That's what confusing me.
They'll be pulled out now, right?
Right. And well, right now, they're in minor work, which requires an application process. So that's, we were trying to pull it away from that, because it doesn't make sense.
I understand what you're trying to do, but I just, there's no nexus to, to routine maintenance.
Then your suggestion is to move them out completely, maybe in the intro.
And put them in somewhere.
All right. Cool. Problem solved.
Okay. Now I understand.
And maybe put some language that, you know, due to circumstance, I don't know, circumstance under control?
There's, there's statute, language we can utilize.
There's a section called how to obtain a certificate of appropriateness.
That'd be a great section. Put it on.
Eric, it's kind of part of the process description, not a description of work.
That, that solves my problem. I just don't, don't want some homeowner to think because of where this is situated, that they can do this unilaterally without getting your approval. Using where it is. It's even confusing me.
As you can imagine, what it would do to.
That's what I mean. That's why I was, I was having a hard time tracking the whole conversation, because I'm going, what basic work and routine maintenance? What COA do I need in the first place? So why would I be extending one?
Okay. So that, as far as I'm concerned, that takes care of basic work and maintenance. I think the discussion was completed last time around on those issues, was it not?
This is, this is the same material that we showed at the last meeting. It's just shown to you how we would like to enumerate these sections, too, so it's a little bit easier, we can say section.
What else would be done besides enumerating? And now we're going to really do three and four.
A nicer-looking table, formatted, that's it.
Okay, that's it. I mean, there's no other, no other changes.
There were no other changes in basic work and routine maintenance.
There what?
There were no other changes.
Okay, so the exact wording is across.
So, excuse me, the, when we had our discussion last time about moving some things from major to minor, to minor to basic, basic to ma, whatever.
Right.
That is presented here, but this shows you side by side. You can kind of go through and see.
My question is, do I need to, or is all of the material, is there any difference between the material on the left and the material on the right, other than formatting change?
There are some changes, yes.
Okay. Then we probably need to go through those and see what they are.
And Eric's point was, yeah, was the ones that we discussed at the last meeting.
Those two, three and four.
No, last time, we discussed several topics at our entire last meeting, was about how we were looking at moving things from major to minor, and a couple things from the minor to basic.
And in several cases, and in several cases, we condensed a lot. They were overly laborious in how they were, the language was written, so we condensed a lot of them, saying the same thing, it's just less words.
I don't know, maybe we need to see the table more, but is there something there about the trees? Aren't they subject to some kind of other regulatory review on trees?
Not this. So this is minor landscaping, including vegetable, flower gardens, shrubbery, removal of dead or diseased trees along the street front that are not in the right of way. So that's currently in there right now.
How will you know, how will you know that they're dead or deceased? How will, is that?
Like a lot of other basic work, they call in and ask, is this basic? Is this minor? Is this major? And I say, is the tree dead? And can you prove it?
But you're assuming a lot there, aren't you? Because if I look at this list, I'm going to say, I don't need to call anybody, I'm, I'm done. It's dead.
Dead. I don't need a permit. Cut it down.
Can you prove it was dead? If you were questioned?
You don't get a chance to ask that question, based on this.
So a lot of times, people call in for a complaint, and then we have code, code that goes out, and we'll ask.
I think we shouldn't require the public to be our policemen here. I think we ought to write a code that makes them do what we want them to do.
Would like to move that. It is currently in basic. If you would like to move it from basic to another category, we can definitely do that.
Is that the only way we can require that they check before they do?
You could, you could expand on the language.
They're going to have to go for a COA if we move it over to the other category.
Not if it's minor.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a COA, but it's minor. Then they have to call.
They have to then get a COA of some kind or another, either staff-approved or us-approved, and they have to pay the money to do that. So now I have to pay what's?
A hundred dollars for a minor.
Hundred dollars for a minor to, to cut down my tree that's dead in the front of the house.
If we want them to only cut down trees that we know are dead or diseased, that's the price.
You know, we, we could expand on that language, too, you know, again, like I, like I stated earlier, that, you know, after provide, with provided documentation to the village planner.
I'm okay with that.
But still leave it in basic.
Correct.
They have, basically, they have to report it to you.
Yeah, and that's, that's how we have.
Take a picture and walk in and say, my tree's dead.
And that's how we've been doing this since 2019.
Or you can, got a question, send out the arborist.
Exactly.
But theoretically, they don't have to contact you. If I look at that list, I say, yeah, you know, that's dead. Boom, right? So now if.
It could be construed that way.
I like your language.
It could be construed that way. But yeah, if we put that fail-safe in there, then if something, if somebody were to take down a healthy tree, and we're able to somehow have, you know, investigate to know that it was, then we could say, well, you didn't get writing from us, and so now, but then what?
Well, you can make, plant a new tree.
Well, then what on any of them?
That is something that you guys, if you were to move it to minor, let's say, if, if you were to move it to minor, you could state that they had to replace, if removal of dead or diseased tree along the street front that are not in the right of way, a tree must replace of similar kind or of approved per appendix.
And, and I think that's more applicable if it, if you're taking out a healthy tree. If it's dead or diseased, it could be, it could be because of any, any number of situations there, but, but.
Not willing to pay for a new tree, then the community's stuck with a dead tree.
Yeah, there you go. And that's crazy. Okay, I'm not paying the hundred dollars. I'm not buying a new tree. That thing could exist there for the rest of, till it falls over.
Well, but it's going to fall on your roof, you know, you don't.
Well, I mean, there could be other circumstances, but it could be nowhere near my roof, so I don't think we want to put ourselves in a position where somebody's going to leave a dead tree in place. That don't look good either.
Yeah. Personally, I'm perfectly happy with the way this is proposed, but I do acknowledge that removal of dead, of a dead or diseased tree is somewhat more important than what we would normally consider vegetable and flower gardens and shrubbery.
Right. So maybe, like Alex said, put a, put a annotation in there. They got to bring a picture, bring, talk to the village, and have the village say, yeah, it looks dead to me, too.
Yeah, that second sentence can be qualified, right? That's all. And these are only street front ones.
And, yeah, and two, you know, Alexandria are not arborists, but sometimes it's pretty darn obvious if a tree isn't healthy. Other times, it, it may not be, and we.
And you have an arborist on staff, so it'd be 30 seconds for him, or, you know, five minutes for him to run out there and look at it and go, yep, it needs to come down. Thank you very much. And he could sit right there and tell them it needs to come down.
I didn't know that I could get that free service. I've been paying arborists to go.
That's not widely advertised. He, he has many other responsibilities.
Oh, yes, he does. I'm not trying to say.
But.
But if it's something for statute or for standards, he'd have to go do it.
Well, actually, the proof is on, on the applicant. So the proof of burden, or the burden of proof is on the applicant, so they would need to.
Yeah, technically.
Tell us that the tree, and prove to us that the tree is dead.
But if you say it upfront, it dispels any ambiguity as to what their responsibilities.
I like the additional wording idea.
All right. Can we, can we require an arborist's opinion in this new language?
No. This is, this is getting crazy. They've got a whole tree ordinance that, that, that the staff is working on, has been working on before. To come up and look at a tree and say it's dead, I do not need an arborist to do that.
But diseased.
Or diseased. Well, if it's diseased, but then it may be questionable, but.
We, we have been at least asking if it, if it's not obvious to staff, to get some sort of professional statement on that. And again, if, if it looks a little iffy from what documentation's been provided to us, we, we do have village staff that we could go and get another opinion on.
That's what you do now?
Correct.
And, and now, would that be considered minor work?
No, it's still, it's under basic work currently. It's still, it's, so it's not really a change. We would be clarifying some language. But that's our practice.
But they don't have, but the homeowner doesn't have to tell you if it's, if it, if it's basic work, right?
It's, exactly. It's somewhat implied that you need to call and check, especially to make that determination. It doesn't say who makes that determination, but again, it could be construed, but I, in my time here, I've never really seen it come up as a problem in the historic district. But I think if we add that language to it, then I think it, there's a level of comfort and understanding that's, that's put in the document for everybody.
Could you get, take a stab at the verbiage?
Removal of dead or diseased trees along the street front that are not in the right of way after providing documentation to the village planner, something to that effect. We can.
And approval thereof.
And, and after providing documentation to the village planner and authorized in writing. And in writing, by statute, means all.
Now, now you're getting, I just leave it where you left it and not go into putting in writing, because then I think you're back to, to Eric's point of view, it's, it is seen as a step around into, to minor work. If you got to have, that stuff does not require any signatures. It requires maybe coming and talking to the village and getting a nod and saying yes, but.
Why would, why would we not document that? I don't understand the problem with documenting that event. What's, what's wrong with that?
Document it, you would need to put it into a minor.
That's the problem.
Well, I, I don't think so, because you don't, you're not reviewing against any real standard, you're just documenting that.
Whatever words you want in here, but if I read that, that thing right there, I wouldn't even come talk to you. And I'd cut the, the tree down.
Guess I could easily paint a picture of a guy who comes in and says, I don't want to be.
Oh, I can paint a picture of anything.
He says, I don't want that tree there. It's a, they'd obstruct something or another. Let's go tell the village it's sick. They come in, they see Alex, the tree's sick. And Alex says, okay. And there's no documentation. Come to find out, it's not sick at all. Now what?
Can you keep records on all of them?
Require the public to make some notification to, to the village, that ought to be documented.
There's no inventory of trees throughout the village to base it against. So you got, if you, in your situation, you got to say, well, there was a tree there. Prove it.
Doesn't make it any less reasonable to require documenting what we're requiring.
No, but other than, I think if you're going to get into documentation, you get into minor work. And now you got to pay a hundred dollars to go cut your dead tree down. And I think that's.
If it's simple as a notation, do you guys have like files or, I don't know?
Currently, what happens is, the typical practice, given just where we are, is most people will email us, hey, this is a picture of my tree. It looks like it's dead and it collapsed on my house. If I don't feel like the picture's adequate, I either ask for more information, I ask for proof of some sort, and then I get an email back with either more pictures, or an arborist has looked at it and, and sent in a letter, and to which I reply, it does appear that tree is dead. Please proceed.
That's documentation.
It is in an email. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody didn't come by and go, here's my tree, this is, and it looks dead. I mean, I could see it's dead. And, and I go, yeah, that's dead. You should probably take care of that. That's not documentation.
I'd have a log book or something.
And the records are kept either as a COA. You can't start another category without getting wrapped around the statute. That's my point.
We don't want to.
I, I don't think we can. I don't, because this is, COAs are required and clearly defined in the statute. And we have no authority to sidestep that statute by putting in other ancillary things that we want.
We used to have another lower level of review, and it was called.
Then we can put that in, rebuild the whole lower level review then, if we want to do that.
And here's the beauty part of having four of us here. We can just get some sort of head nod or which way to move forward on this and tackle another. If, if the majority of you guys are okay with leaving it, as long as you're providing something to the village planner, if it's a concurrence in writing or not, you know, let it, let Alexandria and I make some language on it.
I think this is one we just need to jump, take out and jump over and go back to when we've done some more research on it, would be my route.
Could I suggest you provide, once we have enough people to look at it, two changes, one change that requires some kind of documentation and, and another set of language that doesn't require documentation. And we have a quorum here, we can review those two. Sorry.
Do that? I mean, we're talking about one item, that's something we could work on, just.
Make forward progress.
And maybe.
Similar to what we did in the last meeting, we get, we get into long discussions about this. We're going to sit here for the other, the rest of the two hours, talking about dead trees in front of people's yards. I think we need to go back and look at it more, hash it over some more, let, let staff have a time to look into it, look into the statutory part of it and come back with some mention.
Don't agree on the contact staff language?
I do.
No, the whole thing, the whole thing, if we're, if we're going to re.
We, what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll present something side by side, like what is currently there, like how it has been, and then another one where there's something, some language in there that you've got to show something to staff, and then let, let the group decide as a whole.
Well, I guess I'm not willing to give up on some kind of documentation, unless I'm outvoted, of course.
That's why they need to go back and look.
And the majority of the group might agree with you, or they might not.
Yeah, if I'm wrong in my, by, my understanding of the, of statutory regulation, then you might be able to do that. But they may need to go back and talk to council and say, okay, council, can we make a third category or a fourth category to be able to do that? Will the statute allow us to do that? And if they say yes, then we can either make another category with.
No, you know, really, if, if you want to be tougher on removing dead trees or diseased trees, you just put it in minor work. That's, that's, you know, we don't have to have it, we don't have to.
That's, that's another option out of it, too.
I have no objection to that. Question of, of three, three alternatives. One is what we've got on the page right now. Second is make it minor work. And third is make it basic work, but require a, a report or documentation from the owner, but no staff approval as such. Those are the three options. And why don't we just come back to this?
Another day.
Another day when we got.
Look at it, give us a couple options, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
And, and if it's, if it's, it's been a polarizing topic, it's, I can appreciate the four of you wanting to hear from the other three commission members. Appropriate.
We just need to look at it.
All right. We, I mean, if we can get a head nod on everything else other than this, what, what I thought is, we can start working sections by sections, with staff availability, and then we'll bring it together in a consolidated document, and then that's where we can get the official version.
Right. I'm not sure we're going to get to that point today, to be quite honest with you. It would be nice.
We spent the time.
Positive. We're going to do it.
Should we keep going down?
Minor work.
Onto minor work. All right.
Well, actually, okay, because I was going to ask if something could be moved into basic.
You want something moved to basic from minor?
Well, I'm going back to my old point. What's the difference between replacement and repair? What's the difference between replacement and repair? I'm not sure. Because you've got replacement under basic work and then you've got some replacement under minor work. And I guess I just don't.
Can you give me an example? Which one are you looking at?
Sure, you've got replacement of gutters and downspouts, for example, is one of the basic work. And then replacement of roofing material.
So under basic, we're looking at, you said gutters and downspouts. And it says repair in kind, replacement material matched the existing material in detail and color.
Right. So why couldn't that be roofing, for example?
I, I think the intent with that is that a, a roof might arguably have a, a greater architectural significance to the structure than, than gutters.
And then replacement of exist, missing det, I mean, we've got a problem, I think, with the word replacement, repair. That's my issue.
Okay. So you think.
In both cases, are they not in kind?
So, so repair maybe should all be basic and in a replacement?
Why would we not accept anything that is an exact match of what's there but new? Why would that not be an automatic, you got it? No fee, nothing?
Including a roof.
Because you already have roofing for, for.
And then the decision you have to make is if it's in kind or not. If you think it's in kind, then it's.
Right back.
And then if it's not.
Well, they're not going to have approval. They're not gonna see. I can just replace my roof under the basic.
Well, you're right. Yeah, you're right.
So, I mean, again, I guess it all boils down to trust, but.
If I were to receive a submission, and on the submission it says, I'm replacing my roof with the same stuff that's there, I wouldn't have any reason not to say, go ahead.
So is the issue here just the roof category? Because I think a lot of the things we have under basic currently cover all of repair in kind. So are you wanting us to add a line item for roof under basic?
I think, in my opinion, that if you're gonna simply replace or repair with exactly what's there, it requires nothing.
Same with existing siding trim, right? I mean, really?
Anything, everything.
Replacement in kind, in kind.
I, it would be really hard for me to, if they made a submission and someone said, I'm gonna replace my windows with exactly what's there. And somebody said, no, you can't do that.
Well, that's currently under basic.
This would never happen.
That's already there.
Including roof.
But my point is that there's, in my mind, no reason to segregate roof or a gutter or window or anything if you're going to put back exactly what's there, only new and not damaged, or rotten or falling apart.
Is that too much authority for you guys?
Well, no, other than remember, they're out of it. If you put it down to basic and maintenance, they never see it.
I assume somebody is kind of, I mean, you've got neighbors and everybody else, right? I mean, how that works, so.
But the, the horse is out of the barn.
Well, it took.
So they, they, you.
Oh, no.
How, how long does it take to replace the gutters? You know, roof takes a long time.
Takes a day.
A day.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe it ought to be.
Our next door neighbor replaced the roof on a pretty good sized house from eight o'clock in the morning until six o'clock at night. It was.
And you saw it in action.
They had a huge crew. They got it done.
But let's, let's keep in mind, too, that all that was pretty much existing language in, in these guidelines. What, what we've brought to you are just, just the changes that we saw, that we think could administer the document better. So that might be something else that you guys ask us to go and do a deeper dive and see how many type of projects we list as repair or replace in kind and what category they fall in. And then we can bring something back of, you know, which ones are all of them in basic or all of them in minor or a split based on how significant of a alteration.
Can I also put on the table that you maybe consider some kind of other category that's not minor, that's not basic, that's not major, that is something that's a notification?
What I can do is show you how the previous document was, because I'm, just our, our availability right now to, to tackle that as well might be a little sparse. So I can show you how the existing document worked that preceded this, this, this document. Tom, you may recall that. I think you're probably the most.
Yeah, I.
You and Richard maybe, but there was a, it was just called basically, we had basic work, normal maintenance, minor work, major work. So we had an extra category, normal maintenance. Normal maintenance required that staff issue a normal maintenance certificate. With that, they were projects like painting your house, a new roof. I think dead or diseased tree removal or whatnot. I mean, it, it's an, it's, as Tom said, it's, it's, it's an application. And right now, we're fairly rigid with how we do intake and issue applications because we're, we're digital now. So, you know, the, the computer system is generating that and not a person. So it's, pretty well has to fit in this nice neat box or all hell breaks loose.
I like, I like that.
And we don't have that authority. So we would have to create yet a new record, a new permit in the system. So I, I mean, we would have to consult with our IT folks and there might be a significant cost associated with adjusting our online purchase. That's gonna take.
Let's take a look at it and see how, whether.
Maybe see if you could streamline it to just like a notification instead of a prior approval or something.
We are trying to go all digital. And so we don't have, you know, I mean, anything in this historic district, if we issue a normal ma, normal maintenance certificate, we need to keep that, that file forever.
But it could be, as I say, just maybe like a prior.
One page sheet.
Without approval.
But, but what purpose are we trying to achieve by doing that?
Because apparently there's fear that someone will go ahead and do it without anybody knowing anything.
I could go ahead and replace my roof right now, and I'll tell you right now, nobody would know about it. Because they'd be in and out in a day and unless, by some streak of a miracle, one of the building inspectors drove by and saw them in work and was interested enough to come in and ask to see the permit, that it would be replaced and nobody'd do anything about it.
That's what I'm saying, if you just.
So I mean, that's, that's, so you're, you're chasing, you'll never pin that down to perfection, is my.
You file a notification so that somewhere on record is, so she put a new roof on and she notified.
It gives a.
And I could cut down the tree and have the same issue.
Just, just, just let me try to, what, if we just have a notification and not an approval requirement?
Yeah.
Okay. Then what public purpose have we achieved?
Well. We, I can answer that, or I'll try to answer that. You had said earlier, the, the, I think it's the cat or the cows out of the barn. One of them.
Horses out.
Horse is out of the barn. Animal out of barn. So the notification provides the authority, village staff, an opportunity to observe that they're doing what they said they would do. That's the public.
What's the consequences of not doing?
If they have the notification, the village has no chance.
Well, there is a consequence of doing something around a COA. There's legal consequences to that, same as doing something without a building permit.
Theoretically, we can, we can make them take it down and put up what they're supposed to put.
On a COA, we can.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. On a COA, they, you can literally go in and legally either stop the work if it's not done or B, say, uh-uh, you ain't doing that and replace it.
How did we know? Because some of them kind of came out of the Washington area that I'm aware of, where whole houses were threatened with having to be taken down because they were built.
Out of permit.
Not in accordance with whatever the approvals were that they got. They'd build a three story house.
Take off the top.
Okay, let's say.
So you're gonna take the whole thing down.
Let's say I don't get a COA then, and I go ahead and build a whole new house. So what, you're saying there's no repercussions?
No, I'm not saying that.
We could make them take it down.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I didn't get a COA, though.
Then you may have to tear it all down.
But, so that's what I'm saying is we've got now a notice on record where somebody is representing that, yep, I'm replacing the roof with the same materials as was there. That's it, notice. So there's, there's a record of it.
Well, what do you do if they don't follow up on it? If they don't do what they know?
The same thing you would do.
It's on my lot. And I haven't gotten your approval.
Because, because I don't have a COA, I can go.
Make me take my roof off then?
No, because, because you're just saying, that's, that's what I'm asking.
That's unenforceable.
If, if all you are doing is you're saying, you have to give me notice, and I give you notice, and, and then you look at what I put up and you don't like it, that's too bad, right?
If, if, if.
Because I have violated.
The, the trigger is if you need a government approval. If, if you need approval from the local government, then an inspection has to follow up.
But a notice is not appropriate.
Exactly. If you don't get some sort of permit in hand, what we call it sometimes, a permit, then there are no repercussions.
If you have a COA, shake the roof off.
Well, now, if they, if we say.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm not sure that's accurate.
If, if we say.
I'm sure it's very accurate.
I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Having worked in administrative law, I'm not sure.
From, from planning and zoning, I'll tell you that if you don't, and Alex just said it, if you don't have some kind of permit, then other, it's either a permit, a COA or some legal, government document that says you could do it, you cannot enforce it.
Then they have to submit it and somebody signs it.
Then it's minor work.
I kinda like this work, this, this section that apparently was once there called routine maintenance.
I agree with you. I don't think we should have to pay a fee.
That routine maintenance ought to come with some enforceability if they don't do what they said they were gonna do.
Well, if, if, if it's, if it's, if it's routine maintenance or, or any category that doesn't require advanced approval, okay, then, I mean, let's, let's, let's take putting out a new roof. Let's say, just for the sake of argument, that you, no, let's take gutters. The gutters are easy. Replace the gutters, okay? And it says, replace them in kind. Okay, so same kind of gutters, don't, don't need approval, just go do it. And somebody puts in new gutters and they're different, you know? Okay. They have violated the requirement that it be in kind. So Alex could issue an order telling him to take the damn new gutters off and put, because they violated the requirement.
But you just said he has no basis for telling them that. You just.
Well, I think, I think the point is that.
If, if we say that it's basic maintenance to replace the gutters in kind, and somebody replaces them not in kind, then they have not qualified for basic maintenance.
But how will Alex know what's, what was there?
I think the notification step just gives the county a chance to catch the horse before it's out.
Let's turn this back over to staff. We're gonna talk about this for the.
Well, that's, we're, we're in the middle of a conversation here. Let us finish this, this little dialogue we're going through. So back to your original point, how do we give the village an opportunity to administer what is happening in the community if they have no way of knowing?
Somebody's gonna notice. One of the neighbors is gonna notice and go, those new gutters, they look terrible. It's ruining the whole, the whole look of the neighborhood. We're in the historic district, blah, blah, blah. But if.
Eric, can you get your microphone and understand what you.
Microphone around when you move.
A pale mic, maybe.
If nobody complains, it probably is because whatever is, was done wasn't bad. If it was bad, somebody's gonna notice it.
That puts the burden on the public to be the policeman.
I think we're trying to do a balance here. On the one hand, we could say, you can't do anything in the historic district without at least getting Alex's approval. So we put a whole lot of additional burden on Alex and his office, and we put a whole lot of additional burden on people, the people who own houses in the historic district. If, if doing that serves an adequate purpose, then I would support it. When we're talking about the kinds of things that we've been talking about, like replacing gutters, then I don't see that the benefit is worth the burden. We talk about taking down trees, then I'm beginning to see.
What about replacing a roof?
If it's, if it's replacement in, and I think replacing the roof in kind, something that looks like the existing roof, I don't see that that requi, should require either staff approval or our approval. Because I don't think.
And, and guys, it's gonna be hard to come up with every situational circumstance. I mean, you, there could be a, you know, a, a hundred square foot area of a roof that needs to just be, be fixed, and it's gonna be in kind. Now granted, these days, why would you do that?
Well, that's repair, right? I mean, you've got replacement in one category and replacement in another. And that's all I'm suggesting is that.
I think to Eric's point, so the question is about the burden on staff or on, on the village, really, to add this additional step. So how, is there some way we can reduce the burden to a simple notification?
Can I, can I? Can I add to your conversation just a little bit? When it comes to necessarily burden, I would like to just mention that probably nine point five out of 10 times homeowners are going to do the right thing, especially in the historic district, because that is a privilege to live there. You are preserving and you are part of the preservation of history. And that point five, that does break the rules, I'm telling you right now, it is not a burden for anybody in this village to give us a call and let us know. We are well informed when somebody does veer away from the regulation. And it is been, we've been able to correct that. But nine point five out of 10 people are doing the right thing by the current standards. And our intent is to just make them more clear. And not necessarily more or less restrictive, but user friendly and not a burden. And like I said, most people don't just go out and change something because they know they live in the historic district. They know that there is a, excuse me, a status with that. And so I don't, I don't think that it's.
Is there a, is there a, a village enforcement activity that happens once a year or when a property is sold or, is there any mechanism by which the village monitors what's happening to the exterior structures right now? Proactively without being told to do so by the.
I'm not sure what that would look like.
Yeah, that would, you would talk about.
The place where I used to live had such a thing.
There is no such thing that I'm aware of here.
And you want, you want to talk about a, a, a staff burden to routinely patrol and to be able to document our vast district and how many structures are in there? It would be hard, but it's not like if we, if staff are out to go and inspect this or go and inspect that or toing and froing from lunch here or there and we go, oh, that's interesting. You know, there seems to be some work happening here. We'll go back, oh, Alexandria or one of our other staff members issued a minor work for such and such. Or, oh, wow, they got a major COA six months ago and they're just now. I mean, we, we, we do the best we can, but no, we're not routinely, weekly or monthly going out, taking photos, going back six months, taking another photo and able to do that. We, there, there's no way to, with, with our current workload or current staff capacity, i- is that, is that what the village wants, too? That's another thing. And to really summarize what Alexandria says, I, I understand, you know, because we're taking on this project to look at these standards and try to make them better, try to make them clear, make a solid recommendation from, we have new members on the board, you guys have experience in administering this document, to give a solid recommendation to council is think, you know, what problem are you trying to fix? If, if Eric said, I think, benefit versus burden, you know, that's, that's a difficult thing to weigh. But if, if, if we as staff aren't identifying a real issue, and if you guys can't readily identify an issue other than verbiage, then is there, is there really an, is there an issue?
My original suggestion was to take all replacements and make them basic work. That, that's where this conversation started, I think, and people got nervous. I don't know why, after all the conversation I'm hearing. But I do believe in kind needs to be in the glossary. I don't think it is, and so people know what in kind means.
It sounds to me like since.
Good lawyer's point.
Accepting that there's this burden that we're on is too much, then I, then it occurs to me that there's a distinction between repair and replace, for starters. Repair is, I would think, definable, is significantly different than replace, which makes it less risky in my mind for abuse. Then, secondly, I would think the, the kinds of things about, that are being, if it's, it seems to me if it's being repaired, it could easily fit in basic, no problem. If it's being replaced, then some things in my mind would fit better in minor work.
No, so you're thinking.
But I, but I was thinking there ought to be some way to enforce that, and we're not willing to do that, so. Okay, so then we need to move it back into minor. A roof would be a good example.
Maybe repair and replacement have to be defined differently.
Roof colors change all the time.
Maybe repair.
Got an asphalt chingle roof and you replace your asphalt chingle roof, it's really easy to change the color and it might not be a color that's in the palette.
That's almost impossible if you've seen that palette.
That's true.
The, the gutter and downspout issue, I think, illustrates this well.
At the front desk, sure, yeah.
Because if you're gonna repair your gutters.
How monstrous is it?
Probably gonna be replacing at least parts of them. So the depth, the distinction between a repair and a replacement may be obvious when you're talking about a roof, but less clear when you're talking about gutters and, and other things. I mean, in an, in an ideal world, I would say neither we nor the planning staff should have to get involved with things that are purely repairs, okay? But then we have the definitional issue of when does something cease to be a repair and become something more that perhaps should require at least review and approval.
Well, from staff point of view.
I agree.
Where do you guys come from on that?[1757.65]
I, I want to say, I mainly agree with, with David, that I think if you're talking about a large architectural type detail, like the entire roof or all the siding on the house, I think it's better long-term, because our historic district's only been, been around for 15 years. So it would help for a whole roof replacement, a whole siding replacement, even if it's in kind and matching existing, to issue a minor work COA. So we do have that documentation on file, because again, we don't have, you know, what the archives has is, is very beneficial for us in a lot of cases, or for an applicant or homeowner when they're proposing a major work COA, to have historic documentation of what the house looked like, but we don't have that for every structure. So it is beneficial, I think, to have some sort of review, some sort of file and COA if it's a large detail. If it's repair or replacement, total replacement, total maybe addition of a very minor detail, as example gutters, we just keep going to gutters, then I, I don't see any issue in why there should be any approval. So I think it, I think there is a threshold somewhere, so we can just kind of look a little. For consistent language, you make a good point, you know, you got repair in place here, but you got repair in place. Better explain that, and hopefully that would-
And the in-kind clause, I think Anne's got a good point.
And replace or repair should be defined, but, so you, you guys will take a look and see which ones you think are-
And, and, you know, we, part of what we do is we do make what I consider everyday interpretations on that language. If it helps to define it, sure, but I, I think we can-
I guess after listening to Eric's gutter description, it would be, I would be hard pressed to write such a definition, the distinction between repair and replace.
It could be difficult, but I mean, I, I, we had that opportunity to review the material and make that call. And hopefully it's clear. If, if, if we can't determine, then we've got that, we've always got that in our back pocket. And then-
But these, you guys are pros at this, and there may be people, you know, if you're not around forever, who replace you, who may need specific guidance, right?
That's true, that's true.
Hopefully the-
It could help.
The village would hire somebody with some qualifications and not just replace them with a clerk. And I'm not bashing clerks by any stretch of the imagination, but supposedly the people that, if they're gonna replace Alex or Alexandria, would have some kind of qualification, so they wouldn't be being replaced with-
It'd have to be replaced in kind.
Yeah, or repaired. Just so people understand, and I went over and got it, and I gotta take it back, that's the color palette. That's the size of this thing. I mean, I almost defy anybody to find something that isn't extremely close to what they want to paint. Now, you might, you might not have an orange or fluorescent green or something like that in here.
I dare say there's no roofing in there.
But just about any other color-
Not a stitch of roofing in there. We'll find a single asphalt chingle in there.
Right, but you can find something very close to that color. I mean, this one happens to be why Benjamin Moore, you can turn around and go get five more of them and have to do some cut. You can get down to the point where you have to say, well, this is, this is Benjamin Moore 127.3, and now I want, but I want to use Sherman Williams, so 127.3 doesn't apply, and we get into compare. I mean, you get into absurdity.
So we'll let you guys deal with this category then, right?
And, and too, Tom, be careful, someone may just challenge that.
I agree.
Well, they can.
I have to say that people make a livelihood of that.
I know, but that's why I don't think we want to open that can of worms, is my point. This is pretty expansive.
But the record show that it says on the face of that document, "Do not remove."
And it's not removed from the village office, from the village building.
Like those, those tags on your mattress that say, "Do not remove."
And I gotta take this back, because somebody's gonna walk in, I'm sure, while we're still in a meeting, but I just wanted people to understand the volume of the choices of colors in here.
Are we done with minor work now?
Yeah, well, just, just one second, but yes, we, I would like to move on, because we do, there's some language we would like to have some direction on from, from the group, so we can move forward. Trying to think here, with minor work, there were a couple of changes. I'm trying to-
How about the pool and hot tub?
That is one in particular I want to get to later. So what, what we have changed, since you've brought that to the surface, Anne, is we, we have included the language and hot tub and spas instead of just, just pools. So for a minor work, installation of in-ground swimming pools and-
Can you zoom this up? We're, we're struggling here.
And this would be item 13. Alright, so installation of in-ground swimming pools and spa slash hot tubs that are consistent with the standards. And also pool demolition or infill, which is currently a minor work item anyway. So what we're proposing, you can see on a, on another slide, but for now, I'll just read it. So we're proposing a change of standards for swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs, which we currently only have two standards for those, very minor, I'm sorry, three. The, the addition that we're going to ask is that they be located in the rear yard and not visible from the street. And they can be located in the side yard if they're not visible from the street. And that above-ground hot tubs and spas cannot exceed blank feet in any dimension or blank square footage. So therefore, if someone were to propose a eight by eight, again, this is, we just didn't want to arbitrarily throw a number out, out there. So if someone has a, say the dimension's 100 square feet, someone proposes a eight by eight above, you know, hot tub, it's in the backyard, probably on a patio, it's not visible, we can determine, that's a fairly objective standard, the number and the location. If they're proposing something that's 12 by 15, well, it's a major work, and now they've got to come before the HBC and make their case, and they would not obviously be consistent with the guidelines, so.
Well, pools cannot be above ground.
Correct.
So why are hot tubs and spas allowed above ground?
Because they're not a pool.
Well then, can we discuss whether that should be a standard or not? Or doesn't anybody care?
That hot tubs and pools be defined as a-
No, I'm just saying, hot, hot tubs and spas have to be, can't be above ground either.
Whoa, that's a-
Visible from the street, I don't care if they're above ground, below ground, or otherwise.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't know.
I wouldn't know.
Wouldn't know what?
If it wasn't visible from the street.
Would be visible from your neighbors.
Wouldn't be an above-ground pool either, would you?
Right, but it would be visible from neighbors, so they, I think-
You wouldn't.
Just because it's not visible from the street doesn't mean we shouldn't think about it.
You gotta consider the nature of a hot tub or spa too. If it's above ground, it's, it's easily placed. It's temporary.
Sorry?
They're typically temporary. Like hot tubs or spas.
Only to the extent that they can be removed and almost never are.
So occasionally, you have to take into consideration, some people are, due to like physical therapy, have to have those above-ground spas. And those are the ones you get in, and it has the water, the-
It can be built into the ground.
Those cannot be built into the ground. And if you are somebody who can't climb in and out of the ground, that also creates a problem.
They have those-
How about-
Devices that help.
How about we, how about we stipulate a maximum dimension above grade?
Yeah.
Would that be a compromise?
Difference whether it's three foot or four foot.
Or three foot or eight foot, say, for example.
I don't think I've ever seen a hot tub that's eight foot tall.
Nope, but-
I haven't. I've never seen one that's that, because you'd have to ladder to crawl up and get into it.
Well, why are swimming pools banned in hot tubs and spas?
Oh, I think that, my, and I guess my immediate reaction about above-ground pools is that they're, they're cheap plastic things with a falling apart-
They're tacky. Tacky, that, hot tubs can be too, tacky too.
But, but, I, I, my family used to have an above-ground pool, so I'm not trying to be snobbish about this, but the fact is, it is often considered in classy neighborhoods like Pinehurst that above-ground swimming pools are tacky.
Right.
Whereas, an above-ground spa is not considered tacky.
I disagree.
Is that, is that a correct opinion? I don't know, but I think that is the way a lot of people think.
I, I guess I, I'm with Eric on this one. I don't see that-
Well, then, I, I don't understand why you discriminate against pools and-
For that reason, because they're tacky. We want-
Anything above ground like that, then would be-
I think if you go back and look at it from a historic point of view, you probably didn't see any above-ground pools historically. Almost every pool that I can imagine that was historic was built into the ground, because they didn't have the construction materials particularly to build it on a historical basis. So I mean, if, so I think if there were, and there were pools in buildings and outside of buildings historically. I don't know if there were any of them in Pinehurst or not, but they, they do, they did exist in-
The dimensions that they're providing for standards and these dimensions.
If you want to argue from a historic point of view, I don't think there was ever anything such as a hot tub.
Right, or, or solar panels, or whatever.
So I mean, it's a, you have to come up with a balance somewhere in what you're, what you're deferring here to. We have to allow some new things. Some of them, by statute, we have to allow them. You have to allow micro cell towers. You don't get a choice. The FCC comes in and says, I want to put one here. We can fudge the exactly where and what it looks like and how it's dressed or something, but we can't stop it, even in the historical district. So those are, there, there's some give and take here between history.
What is it about the raised hot tubs that-
Well, it's, to me, it's like a raised swimming pool. What's the, I don't understand the difference.
Well, they tend to be smaller. They're like eight by eight, 10 by 10, probably 12 by 12 is about the biggest thing.
They're pools now, you know, because they have the circulating thing, and you can swim against the resistance.
But we, we're not, we're not prohibiting hot tubs and spas, right?
No, but you're prohibiting above-ground.
Okay, so would you, if you had a spa or hot tub that was 30 by 50, would that be okay?
I think they should all be in ground, that's, that's all.
But we already, so you want to change the allowance for spas and hot tubs to say they have to be in ground?
I guess so, yeah.
Wow.
I, I don't.
Yeah, that's one vote, I mean, not going anywhere.
I mean, that might be, I mean, I would like to get something out of this meeting, but, you know, considering my track record with not, just with you guys, it's not uncommon. We could table that till we have everyone else together. You know, I, I would, I mean, it, in-ground or above-ground, what about a dimension?
What are the dimensions you said though, eight by eight?
I just threw something out of there. I really did. I mean, Alexandria just looked up, a typical hot tub is about seven or eight feet. A spa, on the other hand, I'm not sure, do we want to, we've been using this 12-foot dimension a lot lately. Do we want to do 144 square feet, or any dimension that's not greater than 12? Eight, what?
I'm not sure of the definition between a hot tub and a spa, to be quite honest with you.
It's basically hot-erated water used for recreational.
Yeah, like cold cases, right?
I mean, they're the same.
They're the same.
They're defined as the same. A hot tub or spa are pretty much the same.
That's, that's, that was, would be my understanding. I'm not sure, but we, we delineate them differently, so I, that's why I-
I don't know, that's what I'm seeing. If, hot tubs and, what we're proposing here-
Said hot tubs and spa, number 13. Pool, hot tubs and spa.
If they're consistent with the, the standards, that they can be minor work, but then you go to the standard that we're proposing, that above-ground hot tubs and spas cannot exceed. So we do lump them together and separate from the pools.
Right, from the pools, but we don't treat them separately as from hot tubs and spas.
So you, you think maybe a dimension should be, a hot tub should have its own dimension, the spa should have its own maybe?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what the difference between the two of them is, so I can't answer that question.
Spas are typically larger, and they're more for therapy.
And we ought to have two different dimensions.
By definition, just to clarify, while there are three terms that are often used interchangeably, they aren't the same. A hot tub is an umbrella term for a tub with heated water. Spa falls under a category, falls under the same category, but spa is another umbrella term that refers to water therapy, which typically includes jacuzzis.
Hence you see why they're typically lumped together, because they, they kind of run together.
I, I, I have no issue with putting-
What's the cost difference in having it in ground as opposed to-
It could be anywhere from $5 to $30,000.
That's a pretty big swag. Could be.
So is anything that we're approving, right? I mean, anyway, I, I give up. Uncle.
But we still need to provide them a, a dimension. 10 by 10?
I, I don't know, I'd have to do some research, see what sizes are commonly manufactured and so forth.
Alexandria, just look that up.
I did. So the average size is between seven and nine feet in any dimension. Now, the intent of what we're doing is to try to create a more defined standard that the staff can go by, and only the items that fit this mold then would be approved at staff level. Everything else would still come to the board. So if somebody comes in and says, I want a jacuzzi that's a 10 by 10, and we've only have eight by eight listed, it's automatically a major.
I would suggest recognizing Anne's concern that spas and hot tubs should not be basic work.
Not basic work?
Should not be minor work, it should be-
If it's in the rear yard only, and you can't see it from the street within-
First of all, your standards don't say that.
It does.
You say are most appropriate in the area. I would be so much more restrictive on that language if that's what you-
Okay, so we can change that to must, just as it is up here, and then-
Slow down, slow down. Show, show me where you are.
Yep, so under the minor work listed, this area where we talk about, excuse me-
13, item 13.
This can be, easily be in rear yard only for a, for a minor, and then for a major, it can be any, anywhere else.
Yeah, I, that would be-
Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Yeah, beef it up a lot.
And, and that, you know, think about that too, as we're going through these, is that you can put the parameter on this easily, and so-
This is, this is where you beef it up. This is where you put the objective standard, here in this section.
So what we have presented to you right now is in-ground swimming pools, hot tubs, spas are allowed in rear or side yard in the Pinehurst Historic District, and must comply with their requirements. So this is what we're suggest, suggesting as a staff-level approval. So as long as it is in what we have defined in our current standards as rear or side, then it must meet all of these. So it has to be 75% fencing or landscape material, and it gotta be under the square footage if it's above ground. It's gotta be in-ground if it's a swimming pool, et cetera. And if it doesn't meet all of these clearly, then it's a major.
What does 75% opaque mean?
That's for screen, that's, that's basically 75% coverage from visibility.
And from where? What point of, what vantage point?
From the exterior.
Which part of the exterior? Every angle?
That's, that's not a new requirement, let's keep that in question.
No, I know, but I'm just, but since we're-
If you have a pump-
But since we're putting this under minor work-
If you have a, if you have a pool pump, and what you can keep in mind too, alright. So if you got the pump, if you've got HVAC equipment or whatever, basically on the three sides, that it could be visible, that about 75% of that is somehow covered with fencing, like a little picket fence, or by shrubbery. So this just is fairly covered, that if you're looking, you look at my face.
So three sides, in other words, is that what you're saying?
Usually it's back against the wall, so the back wall wouldn't need-
Well, that would be opaque, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's 100% then, isn't it?
I, I still think, though, at 75% opaque, you can still tell that there's some sort of mechanical device there, but you may not be able to read the brand.
So, said another way, for 100% of the perimeter of the device, it must be screened by material that is no less than 75% opaque.
Are we fixing a problem, or is there not a problem?
I'm trying to answer Anne's question.
Well, I was just, you know, I, I don't, I just don't know what that means, 75%. What tool do you use to say that? I mean-
Take the surface area, figure out how much is opaque.
We can just take it out, because it's already a requirement in the PDO anyway, if it causes concern with-
I, I would, I mean, I would.
It's already in the PDO, that's what is gonna be my next question, because you'd mentioned the PDO on the top of it. What's the PDO required, and if it requires 75%, and we're happy with that, then it's defined.
And the intent the staff placed that in there was to just be, not everyone knows that I need to go to section 9.5 or 9.14 of the PDO to know what our screening is.
I personally think-
There's a whole bunch of things like that.
Put a reference in there to the PDO?
I would not recommend putting a reference. I think that we need to move the information.
Because the PDO can change, the PDO will change, and then we have to come back and just do number changes to this document.
Not only that, but how frustrated do you get if you're trying to figure out what to do, and it says, "See Appendix A," and then Appendix A says, "See another ordinance," and that ordinance says, "Must apply to this."
You're just going on a scavenger hunt at that point.
It's, it's, first of all-
We went through this when we did the major rewrite. Referencing the PDO is a pure, unadulterated nightmare to maintain, because when they change the PDO, then they would have to bring it back to us again to look at our roles, to see if it's, matches what we want, so on and so forth. We get to go more than the PDO says. I mean, we actually get to, we could put 100% in there, for example, and then it would be in there, not because it's in the PDO, but we think it needs to be there historically.
You know, just-
If the, if the PDO were to reduce its coverage to, let's say, 50%, if we take it out here, we're stuck with 50%.
It does suck with 50%, that's why it's there, but I would, in fact, I would get rid of the words "PDO" on the top of that thing, to be quite honest with you.
I put "PDO" somewhere in all of this.
It's in the beginning.
It's in the beginning.
Okay.
Like, you guys cannot rule, or staff cannot rule on an application for a COA for anything that is not really necessarily compliant with the development ordinance.
But I do think it is good to keep some of the more common standards from the PDO into our list, because it makes it user-friendly. It keeps people from getting confused between the two.
Yeah, okay, that's fine to leave it in with me, then. I mean, it's...
I agree, I'd leave it in.
Now that you mention it, it could be more restricted.
Well, we say must comply with the requirements of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance and North Carolina State Building Code. I mean, you could, I mean, that is true of everything in our standards. You have to comply with the law.
We can be, you know, we don't have to say that.
We don't have to say that. But we can be more restrictive than the PDO.
Right.
We can't be less restrictive than the PDO.
Right, and that's David's point.
Right, so I guess my, I guess some level of comfort in writing our own fate. Seventy-five, we don't care what the law says, that's the minimum.
We can say it's there. If they change it to fifty, our seventy-five is still good. If we point to the PDO, now you've got a nightmare keeping the two of them in length, because now every time they would change something in the PDO, we'd have to go back and see if we wanted it changed. We went through that, and, and we went, somebody would sit down and went through a whole series of examples of that, and it got into an absolute soup city to, to, to interlock these two things. They don't interlock well.
So it would be major, then, if you can see it from the road, or they want to put it in the side yard, right?
Or if it didn't meet that dimensional requirement, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Someday, not today.
So what dimensional requirement did we see?
Discuss what "from the road" means. We got into that.
Well, let's...
And how, how we, how we have defined that typically, but we can, if we need to clearly define it, is basically wherever that protrusion of your existing structure is, forward the road, that is your street front yard. Anything...
No, no, I mean to say, let's, let's say, for example, it's in the side yard, not visible from the street, but you walk further down the street and look back a little bit, now it's visible. That's, but I don't want to get into that today. That's a big discussion.
But if it's in the side yard, it'll have to come before the commission.
That soup you're never going to get out of this. So what dimensions did we decide on? Or have we?
Ten, twelve, fifteen, eleven and a half.
Eight. You said eight, didn't you?
We were just...
Eight or nine, I think, would be reasonable.
I mean, tens are a number.
And then you have to get permission for, for more than that.
Right.
Okay. Eight, eight by eight, eight, eight feet.
Eight by eight, defined by me.
Sixty-four square feet.
Most of them are square, as I've ever seen, hot tubs or whatever.
Alexandria, you said seven to something.
Seven to nine is the average for the hot tub.
Spas are a little bit larger.
Right, right there.
There you go.
Because now, keep in mind with a spa being that the nature of it is therapeutic and/or for recovery purposes, they're typically, they're not perfectly square. Sometimes they're a little bit more elongated, which is...
So you want to talk about...
Which is why we put in here, not to exceed a specific feet, and/or a dimension of a square footage. That way, it, let's say it comes in and they, because of their yard, they have to get a specialty hot tub, and it's a four by whatever, as long as it still meets that square footage of what maybe an eight by eight would be, that's something to consider.
Why don't we just give the area, then, sixty-four square feet?
Yes. That's, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, if you just put sixty-four square feet, they can have a...
One foot by sixty-four is perfectly fine.
That's what they want, yes.
Oh, great.
If they need, if they need something larger, then they can come before the commission and say, "I need this for this reason," or "that reason," and sixty-four.
Yep. No, no square, or no exceed dimension. Just take that right out.
Like eight by eight.
Hold on, hold on. On second thought, eight by eight sounds pretty good, without an aerial restriction.
Yeah, because if you want one by sixty-four, that wouldn't be pretty.
That'd be pretty.
Who's going to put in a, a one by sixty-four? He couldn't even get in it to swim.
Don't you do buildings twelve by twelve or something like that?
Eight by eight?
Eight by eight.
Eight by eight or sixty-four?
Not sixty-four. Eight by eight.
Well, then, though, because like, it's spas are more likely to be narrower and longer.
Well, they have to come before the commission, if they're longer than eight feet.
And I, I...
Right.
That's, that's your point.
Right, now, they all, they all have to come before us. So we're reducing restrictions.
So somebody read back to me standards number three, as we think we're going to have it.
Above-ground hot tubs and spas cannot exceed eight feet in any dimension or sixty-four square feet.
Can't really say any dimension where you'd be allowing a hot tub eight feet tall. Just to be nick, to pick a nit.
So I guess what you're saying is that they come to us with a seven by seven by seven. You're not comfortable with that? I've never seen a hot tub that's seven foot deep, but I guess maybe there could be...
I would not be okay with that. You could say, with a planned dimension of eight feet by eight feet.
Not higher than two feet, not, not any wider, or in length or width, more than eight feet. Word that correctly somehow.
Cannot exceed eight feet in length or width.
I, I think they're probably closer to three feet in reality.
She looked up, is, what, thirty-eight, thirty-two inches?
Yeah, to forty-two inches, depending on the jacuzzi.
Forty inches to high and eight foot by eight foot.
And I would feel a little bit more comfortable going to four feet, in case there were ever any questions over barrier for building code reason, but... If, when there's thresholds for how deep the water is, you've got to have the barrier, to like the fence. So if it were, sometimes it would have to be four feet tall, because you have to have a four-foot tall barrier, depending on the water.
Think so, provided it's therapeutic.
So four foot by, eight foot by eight foot?
Cannot exceed eight feet in any lateral dimension, or four feet...
And height. There you go. I knew there was a way we could...
What about diving boards? Do you guys allow those?
The hot tub? Are you talking about in general, or pool?
Those are, those are a PDO issue, really, whether they allow it or not.
Diving boards are? No, nobody covers diving boards? So if I wanted to put a tower, oh, no.
No.
I knew that was coming.
I could? Okay.
Maybe.
Wow, interesting. In the right in my hot tub.
Might not have a reason for a hot tub if you use your diving board.
Yeah, on a tower. You won't need it for long.
You might have more reasons.
Trade it for a spa.
All right, can we move on to fences and walls and try to tackle?
What do we do?
All right, so this is the current language pulled directly from the standards, and then what we're doing is we've moved most all that language over, with the exception of kind of really honing in on a few of these things to make it more specific. So we took out some of the gray areas of our ordinance. That way...
Why did we go away from redlining?
You guys at the last meeting asked to have them side by side.
And I also said that we definitely needed redlining. You can have, you can add on it as a side by side, but when you start talking about changing regulations and you don't understand what you're taking out, and the only way that I can reasonably do that is in a redline format, unless people are all happy with what, I mean, if I read that, what's been taken out?
Added to.
If it's all add, I have no issue with this format. That's not my, yeah. But it's very easy, and we learned this from, from the major relight, if you...
I will do you a favor, and I will redline it, but if you can't understand it because of how vastly different the format is, maybe you'll understand why we did side by side. Because when we went through to try to redline this, you know, that's every single word. So if I restructure the sentence to make it sound okay, it's going to be redlined.
Well, I, I specifically did this section, and I recall very vividly that this was direction that the group gave us. If, if the direction is to do redline, strike through, underline, I've been doing so much of that lately with other ordinance rewrites, I could do it in my sleep. But I, I'm fairly certain we were strictly done in this, and it's starting to get to a level of frustration when there's been ample amount of staff time to try to make a clear change to these documents, and every time we get to a point, we hit a stop. So I've said that piece. Moving forward, what we've tried to do is to do any changes that we've really proposed, or to these minor work items, where there can be a very specific, clearly-applied, objective standard. Luckily, fences are one of the ones that we can be fairly clear and objective with. There are going to be some discussion points here, and I understand that. But if we can, we can just, I'll just start right at the beginning. It's a little bit tough, because we can't get everything on the same screen, and we're a little far away from the monitor, so it's a little, a little small. So left to right, the very top there you see in red, and I did try to highlight the red to be some sort of significant change or addition, alteration to it. This is enumerated as an actual standard, and if you read it, it's more like a preamble or intro to fences. I don't think it's appropriate as a standard. It may not be appropriate to have in the section. The commission can decide. It can just kind of fall right there under whatever section, fences, walls currently is in the document, say A, and then one will get into the very first standard.
We're still in minor, right, by the way? This is minor?
Well, this is the fences and wall standards, so the changes that you'll see proposed here will be how we can apply it as a minor work. So meaning, if this, if, if any fence is consistent with each and every one of these, then it could be a minor work. But if it's not, then it's got to come to you guys.
Got it.
I, I have thought before, when we've had actual cases, that that first paragraph that used to be A, it's very helpful to me in, in deciding a case, because this idea that the street scape is a community asset and so forth and so on, that, that's the reason that we apply the standard, or that we decide that in this particular instance, it's okay to grant an exception. So I think that, that's very important. I like putting it the way you have it on the...
So tape it, but, but not enumerate it. Because as, as you can see, it would be tough for staff to determine, maybe, or apply some of that language in there, because it could be different from Alexandria to myself.
Yeah.
So...
So that's not part of the standard, then? That's just a, a...
Descriptive, or a intro to...
Sort of a little guidance, right?
Guidance, but not a standard.
And helping you make a determinant, you might not, you know, put it as a finding necessarily, but it could help you in making your determination. Okay, so...
And for the homeowner.
I, I agree, I agree. And, and if you're new to Pinehurst, the street skates and the open visual character is very important. As, you'll see, the standard's going to reflect that because of the restrictive categories that we have for front yard or street-facing fencing. You know, they're, they're shorter, and they're typically only one of three types, or they don't meet the standards.
Alex, before you get to, I mean, to yell on the mic, the text we're seeing on the monitor now is the new proposed language.
Proposed, correct.
And the only changes are in red, aside from formatting changes. I'm just talking about act, actual text changes. Is that right? I've got the other one open in front of me, so I can read them both. Because of the format changes, I'm not sure what you're proposing. It looks to me like you're only proposing, for example, at the outset, to add that sentence in the parentheses.
Any other changes, David, in the group are very minor. There, there, there might be a couple of verbal changes, that's it, or grammatical changes, nothing substantive to the existing language that you see to what's proposed. Again, because I'm so experienced lately in doing redlining.
And the only question, are all the musts still the same? Because we have them highlighted in the old format, and we don't have them highlighted in the new format.
I did not change any shoulds or musts. Shoulds or musts, I think, are yet again another topic for consideration.
I just asked the question.
So a, a big change to, to provide some consistency, because there are some gaps between the allowable fence types per the development ordinance and what's currently not spoken to at all in, in the historic standards. So we, we might want to consider, just typically how we've applied, if, if the standards don't speak to it, it's not allowed, it's not disallowed. So tie goes to the property owner in this matter. So if it's not listed as an allowable fence type, but it's not listed as not allowed, then you get your approval. So the post and rail or split rail, those, those terms are used interchangeably with certain folks. It means it's something different personally to me, but that's not how we've applied them. Our permitted and the use of wire is optional on the inside. We do allow for that, you know, for containment of children, dogs, et cetera, that the wire's on the inside, and it must be basically muted in one of those three colors. If that is something the group decides should not be an allowable fence type in the historic district, or if it should be side and rear.
Like those stainless steel wires that are...
It would have to be vinyl coated, most likely, or at least somehow muted.
You've seen them on more modern homes, that you have the, the wire, and they go horizontally?
That, that isn't what that is.
Oh, no, I know what you're talking about. You're talking like, more like the...
Like a rail line.
Yeah, like on an outside deck or something.
Porch rail, or a deck rail.
But what is, what is the wire, then?
Is it chain link? You're talking about chain link?
Chicken wire?
It's usually like square, it's like chicken wire. It could be chicken wire, or it could be the small square wires that are there basically to keep like a dog or kids from crawling through the rail.
Well, I think wire needs to really be then better described, because...
I, I'm not keen on the post and rail allowance at all.
Yeah.
The good, the good thing about the shadow box fence is it provides some screening. Post and rail and, and, and split rail do not.
Fairly open, which goes right to the introduction.
Well, you could, you could have those in front, then, you're saying?
No, we're, no, it's just that it, you can have those, you, you, there's a more restrictive standard we haven't got to yet on the front yard fencing. What we could clarify even more and say there, you know, these fence types are only allowed in the rear and side.
Oh, now I'm confused. What are you proposing for the allowance, location for allowance of split rail and post and rail?
They've been allowed for a long time in Pinehurst, the split rail fences, and there's quite a few of them out there.
They have been allowed by the HPC?
Yes. This is not, this is not a new, new addition.
Just clarifying. So residential street-side fences.
I can show you half a dozen of them within five minutes of, of just downtown, that have these kinds of fences.
Are we talking about backyard fencing or front yard fencing?
Side yard, one of them.
Hey, you need to be really, really restrictive, I think, when you describe this.
Currently, we, we list, and this is a current requirement, it's item four there, that it's got to be either the picket, brick, the wrought iron or the aluminum metal to resemble the wrought iron, and that's it. Those are the only three type with the white picket being the preferred.
In the front yard.
Front yard, correct. And then your height limitation is three and a half feet.
Okay, and the side and rear?
Haven't got to there yet.
Well, that post and rail is not allowed in the front.
Correct. So that's just your, those are the only type that would, if you're meeting the standards, you can only put those type in the front yard, and then your limitation's going to be three and a half feet. That would be the picket, the wrought iron, or the aluminum metal that resembles a wrought iron, or the brick.
Okay, so you're not proposing split rail in the front yard?
Correct.
Maybe you just need to tighten up the language to explain.
We can, we can make it clear later.
Residential street-side fences should be...
Yeah.
Must be, yeah.
Right, that's...
Or a must.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And two, maybe you should consider a height limit on the split rail, post and rail?
You're, you're proposing they're only allowed in the side and rear yards. Oh, okay, now I get it. Then I'm okay with them, and...
So if they were to propose one in the front yard, then it clearly wouldn't, especially if we make the, the must. Same for shadow box fence, you, you wouldn't have, wouldn't meet the standard.
As many musts as you can put in.
Fencing?
Right, and as...
Makes our life easier.
Really clearly delineate what's in backyard, side, whatever.
I don't, I, I...
Even if you have to be redundant.
I, I fault for, I fault for a long time that there, I really don't think there should be many, if any at all, shoulds in regulatory business.
Bust and shell is interchangeable, right?
Correct.
Because if it doesn't meet the must, then it comes to us, right? Right.
Okay. I'll expand on location.
Where you say black, green and brown, to be fair, you should pick the colors out of the color palette by, by name.
For the wire?
I don't think so.
If you're saying black, green or brown, and everywhere else in the document we're talking about must be in the standards, and we're violating that right away, right off?
We're just, we're just being more restrictive than other areas. Yeah, that's all.
So pick a brown and a, and a green.
Black, a green, a brown.
Do you just want us to state on here, black, green or browns are from our paint palette?
Sorry.
You'd like us to just add from the paint, the approved paint palette?
I, I.
Good for that. I like that.
The black, green and brown approved colors from the paint palette?
Right.
Simple. Okay.
I think that's burdensome. I really do.
The pa, the, the color palette has like 50 browns, right?
Some version, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I can understand why we want to have, use the color palette for painting the side of your house. I'm not quite sure why we really have to.
Differentiate that tight for a piece of fence that you basically almost don't notice a whole lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's supposed to be virtually invisible. That's the whole idea.
That's the whole idea.
I think there are some browns in there, to your point. There are some browns that would not be invisible. Maybe we ought to restrict it to black only. Black period.
Actually, I think the green and browns are less visible than the black, personally, but.
I think a dark green and brown would definitely blend, could blend better with landscaping and background.
But the problem is, what green is green? Black is black.
Dark green. Instead of green, we could play dark green.
Fine green.
Darker colors.
I think as soon as you open the door to allowing dark green versus forest green versus, you name it.
I, I think we're reasonable enough to make that determination in staff. I think we can make it. And if we, if you guys noticed that, it appears that we, why on earth did you approve that minor COA? Because that is a fluorescent, more, that is not, it becomes an issue that.
You wouldn't approve one that was fluorescent green. I mean, come on.
Every should will.
You wouldn't even come, you wouldn't even consider a fluorescent green fence in there.
Every should will be replaced with a must.
And these are things that staff gets to look at. I mean, it's not, it's not something that's the side of a house. Eric's point.
Dark green and dark brown. Can we do that?
Easy. I mean, it might mean different things to different people, but I think we can.
So does green and brown, so.
Why do you have to have any colors? As long as it says muted in color, isn't that good?
That's a little more subjective. I think if we pigeonhole it a little bit more, then it helps our, us making that determination. We can defend that a little bit easier.
A red could be muted, red.
Oh, cha, chain link fence would be acceptable.
No. We're not there yet, but chain link is not permitted and on residential properties. It's a current standard and it's not proposed to change.
So where you say.
Vinyl and chain link fences are not permitted on residential properties.
Number 17.
Chain link fencing is different than using wire on the inside of a post and rail. And it'll, yeah, that's why, as far as I can get where it's given.
I guess I, I would beg the question, why? What's wrong with black chain link in a post and rail?
Residential property, it's, again, too, it runs afoul of the development ordinance, so it's currently not allowed on residential.
Okay.
Number eight, this is a new one, kind of starting to get on a little bit of what Ann touched about more modern fences. How do you guys feel about the, the horizontal, the rails needing to be horizontal? How did we put that?
Rails should be vertical and not horizontal.
How do you do a split rail fence with vertical wires?
Good point.
I don't know how you build one with vertical. I may be wrong, I don't know. I'm just questioning, and I've never seen a vertical split rail fence in my life.
Do it with a diagram, really easy.
Were you talking about even?
How we describe that, yeah. Like, like a shadow board. Right now, you could do a shadow box fence with all horizontal and not vertical.
Well, that I've seen.
Help us, help us with that language.
That's permitted, right?
With a diagram.
Oh, it is the horizontal? I didn't think the horizontal was permitted, right?
There's nothing prohibiting it.
Can, can you use by example or by diagram and put a di, an illustration in there showing?
Like aside from post and rail or fence and rail?
Yeah, fence, fence rails need to be horizontal. I know how you'd build a fence, a split rail fence or a fence.
Well, may I ask, do we care if nobody sees it in back, whether they're vertical or horizontal? Or is this just a front concern?
Side yard.
Or side concern viewed from the road?
I think you see a backyard fence even from the street.
I've, I've never seen any. Do what you want with it.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Have you seen horizontal?
I've never seen a vertical split rail fence.
Oh, oh, I know.
Make things simple, what we could do is take that line item out, and if something were to come in that's questionable, we have the ability to elevate that to a major COA. And Alex made the great point that if, if it's, if, if we feel like this isn't going to make it user-friendly, then we might as well just take it out. And if it comes down to it, when those few applications come in, we just write on the agenda.
Be consistent with that call.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you had a must in there that they, must not be vertical, or must not be horizontal, then you could, it would come to us, right? If it were.
Well, this.
But in Tom's point, then if you got just a post and rail, then.
But if. Post and rail had, the rails are going to be horizontal, and there any way to build them one other than that?
I've seen the wood fences that are all horizontal and they look very.
But they're not post and rail. But they're not post and rail.
No, and they're in the side yard and they're, they look very modern to me.
Oh, you mean the, the shadow boxes I've seen horizontal, but this is a post and rail fence. And I, I don't know how you would build one.
Except for number, whatever.
Well, I think at that point, it starts to make it complicated, so it's easier just to remove.
I agree.
Number eight, take it out, leave seven in, and then if we do have something that comes in that we feel like.
It looks weird, then send it to us.
Right.
Or we don't think it meets the, because if you think about it, here's the type of fencing that are, that are allowed in totality in historic district per these standards, a picket. So a picket does not have horizontal rails. It's very specific in there about even how wide the pickets must be in the space between. It is not brick, it is not wrought iron or metal that resembles wrought iron. If they were to do that, it wouldn't meet the definition of a post and rail, per se. And I could make the determination that it would not meet the definition of a shadow box.
Why don't I make a little diagram for you? Here's a post and rail, here's a split rail.
I have some diagrams for fencing to add in.
Got diagrams in here already, by the way. One of the strongest points of your ordinance are the diagrams.
Mm-hmm. But we, text always trumps the, the pictures. You would, you would be very, it would be very hard to defend an action on a diagram, solely on a diagram.
Wow, I, I would be really surprised since every structure built here is based on diagrams, not words. They're pictures. They're drawings.
But there's also the standard, the text that applies to those. You use that to help make the determination with that text.
I'm not suggesting you eliminate the text, I'm just saying, example, an example of the split rail is figure six or whatever.
Yeah, we, so having the imagery, I mean, obviously what we're presenting to you now are the actual meat and potatoes. What we would like to do, what we would like to do is to, once we have these standards, be able to present to you some imagery that goes with it. A lot of the sections do have existing diagrams that are already there that we can utilize and some that need to be expanded or improved upon. And so that, that's, that's something further down the road that we start adding pictures once we have the text confirmed.
Yeah, I have to say, I, I just don't understand what number eight allows and doesn't allow, and so I'd be, be very happy to see it eliminated.
I, I would like to say.
Well, except that I, I know there's a, I know where there's a fence with all horizontal wood, and how would that be prevented then? That's.
What kind of fence? Is it a shadow box fence?
Yeah.
But there are no rails in a shadow box fence.
Or have vertical boards.
They have vertical boards.
Yeah, well, boards then maybe is the term, right? Fence boards shall be vertical.
I thought eight specifically applied to number seven.
But can eight say fence boards?
No, shouldn't say some fence boards.
Isn't eight a continuation, as Tom said, of seven?
That language in there, just, but.
I, I, which, what, I'm not sure what you're saying. I don't know what, how you have, if you include it in number seven, how do you have?
Hey, you know you have a fence and the boards go like that?
Then it's not a split rail fence.
Right. No, I, I know that, but I'm saying, you know how you have fences that do that?
Yeah.
I've seen fences that do this.
I'm not arguing that point at all.
But that's what I'm saying, how is that going to be prohibited?
I, I don't think you've ever seen a split rail fence that goes like this.
But I'm not talking, I'm talking about.
So, so Ann, it wouldn't meet the definition or the description of one of the allowable fence types. It wouldn't meet the definition of a shadow box, wouldn't meet the definition of a brick wall or column, wouldn't meet the definition of the, the, the metal or wrought iron, it wouldn't meet the definition of picket. The only one that could meet.
What's shadow box mean?
Shadow box fences must have vertical board width of not less than four inches nominal and not more than 10 inches nominal with a maximum overlap of one inch, and boards must be at least three-quarter inch nominal thick.
What would shadow box mean?
Seen the wooden fences?
No, I'm just, what, I'm, I'm an owner, what does shadow box mean?
That's a good point. Diagram would help.
Or a, a definition.
I can tell you what a shadow box is, if that's what you're looking for. I, I, it's something that's well-known in this area.
But nobody's telling me exactly what it is versus putting up so wood right next to each other.
No, it's not that.
Okay, so what's that one called?
That one is a vertical fence, okay. A shadow box alternates every board, one side and the other. That's the difference between the two.
So are those allowed then?
Shadow, yes.
The side, but let's say I put wood.
Both are allowed, either straight, up and down, and shadow boxes, correct? I know they are by the PDO, I'm not sure. The PDO was changed, because I know I've got one that's got all the board, the planks on one side. At one time, the village had them that you could only have shadow boxes. That has changed. And shadow boxes is where you alternate sides of the two before that you, that you met across. A straight plank one would be all of them on typically the outer facing side of the, the, the structure of the fence.
I'm saying definitions would be helpful and.
So number six does define that as far as shadow box and the parameter of what it is and what it has to be.
With not less than four inch, yeah.
I'm not sure, do you want us to expand that?
But you're assuming also already shadow box fences must, so.
We, I think.
Kind of circular there, isn't it?
This, this, I think in the, if I remember right, and we'll have to look, if I remember right, we only allowed shadow boxes in the historic district. I don't think we allowed plain fence ones.
Where does it say that in, in these standards?
Number, number 10 under, the old one, number 10 said, solid wood fences are not permitted.
Right, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's it.
And we had a case, which I remember very well, where the applicant came in asking for solid wood fence because she'd seen another one in her neighborhood and thought that therefore they were all right.
No, but I meant, I knew.
And the case before hers had a shadow box fence, so when she got up, I said, would you find that acceptable? Which I liked that much better. So. It's my, my, my greatest.
I think shadow box is clearly defined right there in number six. I don't think you could build anything other than a shadow box.
We, we certainly haven't had any proposed, so.
Yeah.
What's that?
These horizontal privacy or shadow box style fences, so.
Most of those are almost believed usually.
I gotta raise a hand. I've, I've got open on the left the old ordinance, which is off the screen here. On the right, I see what you've done. And as I'm trying to follow what changed, I'm totally lost. Like, for example, in the old one, number four said new picket fences. Over here, that's item number five. The next one, number five, in the old one says all wooden fences should be stained. Oh, wait a minute, it's not there. Where is that?
Because the proposed ones are more.
Number nine. So they've, they've kind of shuffled around? Is that's what happened?
Yeah, because I, because I don't think they were categorized right.
Okay.
You know, allowable fence types here, your height limitations here, your location there, and then your colors there. So just, it was just more.
They just moved around.
Instead of being a little, you talk about, here's this type of fence, and then you go into width, then you talk about another type of fence, and then you talk about wooden fences being painted.
Okay.
It just seemed to not flow.
I'm gonna have to ask you where things are. For example, in number 10, this allows solid wood fences. Is that on the right somewhere? Has it moved?
I think I put it down under the, I thought it was down under the prohibited, unless it got cut off.
The answer is.
I think it is on here or was intended to be.
It was not an intent to not carry that over.
Wait, right here. Oh, wait, no, no, sorry.
Maybe you haven't scrolled down?
Number 18, are we talking about?
Cut off on 17.
One more below it, scroll it down, it's number 18, but it, solid wood fences are not appropriate in Pinehurst historical, just scroll it down.
Oh, there it is.
There it is.
What's below that?
What else is hiding?
Are you gonna say?
The one she just went got heaven on it.
It's tinier, but yeah.
So you, you're gonna put more musts or must-nots?
I've changed one already.
Okay, just to reiterate, I'm not trying to be difficult, promise. You didn't remove anything, right?
Not intentionally, no. Everything that's on this side is on this side and more.
Some of the language is condensed.
Yeah, shortened.
Instead of three sentences to talk about picket fences, you can get it done in two.
Again, the goal is to make this not only user-friendly, but staff-oriented, so it's clear-cut and dry.
One, one thing I might suggest for the next meeting, which we're gonna have to have because we're gonna lose one of our members pretty quickly, I don't think that redlining the changes on this kind of document is going to be all that helpful. I understand Tom's point. I think what would be helpful is in the new language, if you could put brackets that would indicate what number it corresponds to from the, from the existing. So, you know, six and put, just put in brackets, old, seven, or whatever happened to be. That way, we, we know where the substance is, and we can just look at them and we can see what's been changed. It's not as though, you know, I, if, we were talking about a legal document, Tom, I would agree with you, but this kind of a document, I think what we want to know is.
Yeah, I think, I think your, your, your idea of putting like number one, bracket 15, because it used to be 15, number two, bracket 13, because it used to be 13, and then if you don't have a bracket after it, we know it's either. you don't have a bracket after it, we know it's either...
Well, if it's, if there's no bracket, you can put new.
And just to make sure that you guys don't have a false expectation here, is when we do that, we don't have numbers throughout some of these, so like, the way that they're done, they'll be like, it would say like, free A, double I.
Yeah, like an outline.
So just know that.
But for the, for the kind of documents that we've been looking at this morning, I think, you know, that would, to me, that would be helpful. I agree. Is there, I probably, it's my fault, probably, is there some way for me to review this stuff before we get together here?
That was the intent in providing this a week ahead of time.
I missed that.
Yeah, we, the intent was not to give this to you guys today, by any means, no.
Sorry.
Okay, we, we have that goal to get this out the Friday before the scheduled meeting.
My fault.
We would not, we would not expect you guys to go over it.
Okay. Somebody has.
Well, I put more musts, not, are not appropriate, you know, just...
There's very few in here about should.
Solid wooden fences, something with a must or, or not permitted or something.
Yeah, it's what it says.
Not appropriate equals must.
It should be not, not permitted.
I'd be more restrictive in the user language.
I wrote not permitted, so I don't know where that carried over, because that's the exact language we have.
I think we should say...
Not appropriate is when we're...
All caps.
Throw him in.
Like banned.
Boom.
Banned in Boston.
Trust me, that, and the, when we went over fences, we spent, just to give you an idea how painful I got, I think like about six meetings just on fences alone. And they were half-day meetings of...
I have to say, when I was asked to join the commission, I immediately read the ordinance, which I had not done before. And having come from that world in my past life, I found your ordinance to be one of the best, and the primary reason for that was the narrative descriptions of the historic reasons and the diagrams and photographs. And I think the use of diagrams and photographs would be very helpful, particularly to the layman.
I agree, and you remember when we had the one case that we have turned down in the time that I've been on this body, that out Linden Road, what's it, Saddle Row?
Saddle Row, yeah.
To me, they showed us various pictures, but I looked in our guidelines, and they had pictures of what we mean when we say... Particularly when you're trying to understand what the text says and what you need to ask a question about, the pictures become much easier to communicate, so, but you need the text as well. You can't rely on the picture in and of itself, because people have different interpretations of every piece of art in the world, and they're not dimensional drawings, so it's not like you've got a real standard applied to them, but, but in conjunction with the words, I think it's an excellent idea to have pictures, and I absolutely agree with you.
Don't worry, we'll have plenty of pictures.
Oh, I know, but I think that's a subsequent step to working on the words.
Our goal is to make life simpler for you guys, too. I mean, that's, right? So you have clear guidance, and you can say, hey, or go...
That's our goal, too.
No, no, that's what we're sitting here doing, right?
Yeah, but I don't, I think we gotta get through the words, and then we can add pictures and go back and look at it again and make sure the pictures match the words.
Well, solid wooden fence, so I was just looking at different types of fence, is that like stockade? Just looking at, okay. I just...
Alexandra, also, I'm quite happy to offer my help in preparing these kinds of diagrams.
That might be a resource.
I will let you know, I've got, yeah, I've got several, just because of my experience with writing ordinances. So I've got a lot of stuff already kind of like bookmarked, and then I went and pulled a lot of the award-winning historic districts to look at their diagrams, and I've replicated that by taking pictures from the village and utilizing those as examples. But if we need further elaboration, especially when it comes down to time, I definitely might take you up on that.
You guys could set up office hours when we get to that point, when you're ready. David, so there's no need in going through this whole...
And it's not a meeting with one person.
Want to draw?
There was a, one more item I would like to, Anne, I know you're gonna have something to say about this one, so...
Is there any more on this thing?
That's exactly what this is, and maybe we can wrap the fence part up, at least to the extent that we have today. So typically, old item 11, that's how it described you measuring the height of fences. And it's, it's a paragraph with two indentions, and it's terrible, so I broke them out. All right, so first of all, if you're doing a brick or stacked stone wall residential street side, because again, it's an allowable street side fence, typically they're smaller in stature, so your limitation's two and a half feet. All right, other front yard fences, and this is consistent with the development ordinance, gotta be three and a half feet in height, no greater than three and a half feet. The rear and side yard fences must not be taller than six yards, sorry, six feet in height. That is a change. Right now, the side yard limitation is four feet. In order to alleviate any issues with that, the next item is if you're doing side yard fences, and they're greater than four feet in height, then they must be set back from the front corner of that facade, which would be in that side or side yard, so it's gonna be set back. How far? Usually, we used to say they had to be set back within the old guidelines, so if you were going to a taller fence in the side yard, to not be so restrictive that it has to be four, because then you could go three and a half to four to six, which could, in essence, look odd. This commission has not issued, has not denied a request for a six-foot side yard fence. Of course, it's based on what's been presented. However, if you are going to do that, staff can review that, but you've got to set it back 10 feet, five feet from the front corner, and then have some landscaping on the outside so it softens that. So is that amenable to this group? What is that dimension?
Can you remind me what constitutes a side yard?
Anything that's behind the furthest protrusion of the front of that house.
Back to backyard?
Back to the furthest protrusion of the backside of the house. So the side yard...
It could go on all the way back to the back property, would still be side yard fence.
That'd be backyard.
Wait, the side starts at the front.
Okay, I thought the rear...
At the front corner, you're saying? The side starts at the front corner?
Front corner to the back, to the, to the back corner of the home, so that run there.
That corner.
You say the front corner of the side.
But that's, yeah, so that's where it would have to be set back, but I was just trying to give you the...
Oh, 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 I see. Well, right now, it's, the side yard is defined as open space on the same line.
That diagram.
Yeah, okay, so I just drew a diagram for you for the purposes of right now, and Alex and I are labeling it so that way you can have a clear understanding of what's what.
And green and purple, so it's easy to tell.
And green and purple, so what I've done is drawn a weird-shaped house so that way we can make it as complicated as possible, and...
Don't we have one in the ordinance already?
There's one, yes.
Well, where is that?
Probably in fencing.
Under fencing.
What pages were you just on, David?
55.
55?
Yeah, there's a pretty decent one. Yeah, right here.
Probably enlarged.
56?
56.
Okay, got it. I'm good, thank you. Yep, not that yours is probably better, but I get it.
But you had asked what would be side and rear, and so this gives you a clear understanding. What he's stating, and based on these standards, is it would be the furthest point forward to the furthest point in the rear, that's considered side yard, and it's of the existing structure. It can't be a disconnected structure, it's the primary structure. So if there was a, let's say, a carriage house over here, that's great and all, but this is how the determination is made, side yard, front yard, rear yard.
The point at which you begin measuring the setback is not related to the front of the side yard, it's from the front corner of the house at the side yard. Is that right?
That's where, that's where the set, the proposed setback would be measured. So if you look at Alexandria's drawing here, this is the front facade. So if you're doing a side yard fence, again, side yard, greater than four feet in height, it would have to be set back, whatever dimension we can agree on, and then would have to have, you know, landscaping.
My question, on the right side of your house, you're not measuring from that same line.
We would, we would measure from here, whatever that, whatever that facade's...
I would disagree with that.
Why's that?
On the right side of the house, the side yard setback that we're trying to define should be from that corner on the right side of the house.
Right here. You want right here.
Yes, right there.
That's the, this is the...
It's the front of the house, but if it's an L-shaped house, I'm looking at the diagram in the current ordinance, which is an L shape, just like...
Okay, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Yes, yes, I do agree. Yes, I do agree. If you're doing a side yard fence over here, then this is the applicable, the applicable facade.
So it's related to the structure adjacent to the side yard in question.
Correct. This will still be a side yard fence, but it would have to be set back from that corner.
So if you put a porch on the front of that, or a set of steps or whatever, and a, oh, on the very front of the house, the front facade, yeah, nope, up where you were, right on the front. It doesn't include porches or anything like that that would be sticking out further than the front corner of that house. Is that correct? That's my understanding.
I think there are two points of measurement. The left side of, the left side yard is measured from one point.
Right.
The right side yard is measured from a separate point.
But if I put, if that house had a small porch, a couple of columns and a roof on it, in the very front of the house, you wouldn't measure from the front of the porch, you'd measure from the front of the house.
Primary...
The primary structure.
Okay.
Maybe is facade the right?
No, it says the exterior face, so I think face would tell me, not maybe an open-aired porch, but it would have to be, you know, a wall, something that you're facing instead of open. Maybe not steps, not, not open columns, or an open porch.
Right, but if it had a closed porch on it, then it might count.
I'd use the word facade.
You would use facade? Okay, that's, they have facade.
Not face, but facade. And my suggestion would be something closer to 20 feet under those.
I threw 10 feet, five feet, say, again, it's kind of like the hot tub.
They've got X's there to set...
Yeah, I would suggest at least 20 feet to allow that taller fence.
You'd have to go back 20 feet from the front corner.
Right. I mean, the depth of that piece...
Raise the height.
The depth of that piece of the house is gonna be in the neighborhood of 30 or 40 or 50 feet. So we're talking about something close to half the depth to give them an additional two feet of height.
And if it doesn't meet that, then they come before us, right? So...
If they want to move it back 10 feet...
They would just bring it as a measure.
They'd have to come up to us.
Yeah, or they, they can have four feet. They could carry the front yard fence, for example, back 20, to the 20-foot mark, and then come up to 6 feet.
Right. They could, they could have four feet, but if they wanted, I don't know, five or six, they'd have to go back the full 20, or it would come to us.
That would be my suggestion.
I understand. Yeah. You want to say facade of the main residence or something?
So then, you're talking at number 16, where those three X's are, to put 20 feet, or put the numerical number 2-0.
And I come to that because, in general, the, the height of the eve of the house is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 feet, so proportionally, we're talking about twice that dimension seems about right to give them two more feet. It's purely subjective, but we're trying to make it not subjective, so I'm suggesting 20 feet.
Hence the reason for the three X's there.
Yes.
Otherwise, I'm just, I'm putting my personal field out.
So they come there, and this is for you to approve it, and if it says, if they're 10 feet, then they want 6 foot?
If the group likes...
They've got to come to us.
If the group likes 20, it'll be 20. If council agrees, if the group likes five, and council agrees, it'll be five.
I vote for putting 20 in right now.
We're allowing something that they weren't getting before.
You're giving, you're giving some latitude there, so...
20 feet works.
The goal here is to make these tall structures, fences...
Not to create a compound.
...part of the streetscape, so we're trying to make them subservient to the mass of the building.
I have no issue with 20 feet.
Do you want to say facade of the main or the primary residence or something?
The primary facade.
Primary facade, yeah.
Primary would be...
Primary facade, maybe.
I think the point at which you're measuring is not necessarily the primary facade for this side yard question.
It could be. In essence, it's like we drew there, you know, the furthest protrusion may be the garage, it could be a front-facing garage, and that, and this might be the primary facade, maybe this, I don't know where we flipped here, but, you know. So I think, I think the applicable facade, I think, is maybe right, and we can make that...
We're gonna make that decision if you don't. What logically makes sense.
No, I think that's a good change.
Great place for a diagram. A, B.
I do not have those abilities.
It sounds like you have somebody who does have those abilities on each end of this group. Okay, I need to meander, which if my calculation is correct...
Before you go, can I...
Make it quick, because I've got to, I've got to leave.
Very, very quick.